On YouTube, FaceTime and all of the other social media. Okay, good. Okay. Okay. Phones on mute, please. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Woodfin Town Council. Today is Tuesday, October 21st. We want to welcome you and we are streaming live on social media. This is this is recorded. So if you choose to speak tonight and have signed up, if you want to speak and haven't signed the list, please do. And when you speak, we'll ask you to come to the podium because you have to state your name and your address. That has to be part of the public record. So we're glad that you are here. Everybody on council's had a chance to review the agenda. Is it okay as is or do we need to add?
Oh. Sorry. Now's the time for new business?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I do have a motion.
Okay, I heard that rumor.
I'd like to add to new business as item four, a council discussion on the I-40 managed lanes proposal from the NPO Metropolitan Planning Organization.
It'll actually be item five.
Item five?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that or everybody okay with that going on the agenda? I see nods.
Just a clarification, Phil said under new business, which would be item three.
No, it'd be item five. That's not a subcommittee.
I thought it was new business.
New business, which is G.
Oh, I beg your pardon. Yes, you're correct. Okay.
Great.
All right, that was.
A discussion?
It's a discussion, yes. And I'm going to poll you. Is there anything else to be done with the agenda or is there a motion to approve it as it's now been amended?
I'll make a motion that we approve it as amended.
Second.
All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Great. The first item of business, the Vice Mayor has a proclamation regarding domestic violence prevention and awareness month.
And if you all will notice, most of us up here, I think all of us do have our ribbons on to acknowledge this month, but domestic violence, also known as intimate partner violence, is a persistent issue in Buncombe County, is present in every neighborhood and across all boundaries of income, race and education. The trends aren't encouraging. In the past two years, the number of criminal cases in Buncombe County involving domestic violence rose from eight hundred and thirty-seven to one thousand one hundred and seventy-one, a nearly forty percent increase. Over a similar time period, the number of in-depth danger assessments that help make conducted increased from eight hundred and fifty to more than twelve hundred. So it's obviously an ongoing problem for us. We have a proclamation that I'll read. I'll read it quickly. It's rather long. But it states whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that violates an individual's security and humanity due to the systematic use of emotional, psychological, physical, sexual and economic control. Whereas an average of twenty-four people per minute experience rape, physical violence and or stalking by an intimate partner in the United States, more than twelve million people over the course of a single year. Whereas the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any specific group of people, but can happen to anyone regardless of racial or ethnic identity, sexual orientation, education level, socio-economic status, sorry, gender identity or religious beliefs, and these problems are sustained by societal indifference. Whereas intersecting layers of vulnerability due to race, ethnicity, gender identification, sexual orientation, age, ability, religion, spirituality, citizenship, status and spoken language in the context of American society make it easier for abusers to isolate, control and create and sustain power over survivors with marginalized identities. Whereas children who grow up witnessing domestic violence in their homes are deeply impacted and are more likely to have trouble in school, more likely to perpetuate and victimized by violence themselves and are more likely to experience long-term mental and physical health challenges. Whereas survivors should have help to find the compassion, comfort and healing they need and abusers should be held accountable for their violent behavior. Whereas powerful partnerships exist locally between many nonprofit and governmental organizations that are committed to supporting survivors in their journey towards safety and healing. Whereas it is the survivors of abuse who have been at the forefront of efforts to bring peace and equality to the home. Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is an opportunity to stand with survivors to celebrate the progress we have made in combating these crimes and to recommit to preventing domestic violence in our community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed on behalf of the Town of Woodfin that the month of October 2025 be proclaimed Domestic Violence Awareness Month and we urge our residents to make the commitment to stop violence by speaking out against it and learning more about the resources available to survivors and their families.
Be it so proclaimed. Thank you. Where are the candidates? Are they already in conference room? Okay, it's already done. Okay. The consent agenda, it had six specific items on it. I hope everybody had a chance to look through it. I have a one question on one of the items, item number four, the Justice Grant Award. I'd like to ask the chief, is the skill set of the employee you need to hire, is that a complicated one? Will that be an easy position to fill? It's well paid.
It is not an easy position to fill. We are looking for somebody who has extensive policy writing experience, preferably in the law enforcement field. We're looking for somebody who is intimately familiar with accreditation processes and risk management programs. So it is a unique skill set that we're looking for.
I have one other question for those in the audience and online. Our chief applied for and received a federal grant of a hundred and eighty-three thousand sixty-nine dollars that will allow her to hire a specialist and bring on some software and to try to get our police department upgraded and fully accredited, which is a fantastic achievement. Thank you. I read the grant itself and it says you have to do some facility upgrade. Are those big little items?
Um, I would say small as compared to what has been done with this facility already. There are some additional security features that need to be put in place within the building and again, as it relates to like the big picture, a fifteen thousand dollar upgrade is not that significant.
Okay, great. Any other questions for anybody on council? Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. That's five oh. Now we come to the section of our meeting where the public is invited to attend this meeting in person or online. We do invite members of the public to come to the podium and address town council. We are, we will have a clock running. Those are limited to three minutes unless you come representing a large group of people. Who's, is anyone signing for public comment? Oh, it's right here. Mr. Star, Bob, come on up, please.
My name is Bob Star. I live at two-two-two Westridge Farm Road in Asheville. I have a couple of things I just want to, comments I want to make. One, I wanted to express my support for the candidacy of Jackie Craig for one of the board positions that are currently open. Jackie has been a contributing and very reliable and productive member of the board in the time she served. I know there was some confusion about whether her term was going to continue past June thirtieth when her term expired and apologize for any confusion on our part. Secondly, I want to address an issue that has become more visible over the last few weeks. And that has to do with disparaging comments and misinformation that has seemed to have come out of the town council. I can go into specifics if you like, but basically it's not helpful to the efforts we're making to approve operations at the store and to retain employees since they've witnessed some of these comments and events. And I would like to beg the council to, if you have issues with any employees, with the store manager, with the board, that you come to us directly either in this forum or at the ABC Board meeting in the future. It's just very, very disruptive and not productive at all for what we're trying to do.
Well said. Thank you. And for those in the audience and online, there is a vacancy on the ABC Board of Directors. There are three applicants. They are currently in the conference room and at some point in the maybe they'll come back to be interviewed and council will make a decision on who will fill that position for the next two years. Anyone else that didn't sign the list that would like too quickly? If not, we'll move on. Thank you. Presentations and reports. We're thrilled to have Cheryl Olson from ABCCM here to give us an update on, I guess, how we're using our money to benefit Woodfin residents.
So I don't know how to work this.
Do you want to just hit? What's that logo? That's ABCCM.
That's very nice. I want to thank you for inviting me again to speak about one of my favorite subjects besides crisis, the emergency fund from Town of Woodfin. We haven't seen each other since Helene and so I'm just going to update you that a little bit. This, I'm not sure what the dates were on this when I did July to July, I think. But we successfully spent your money. There were many, many, many requests since Helene because many people in Woodfin lost their jobs, lost their housing, some watched it get washed away. We listened to all the horror stories that came from Helene. We helped best that we could with not only your fund, but our fund as well. Rent assistance is always the biggie and this one especially because I mean, it seemed like everybody that was coming in were coming for rent, not really utility. So as you can see, that's way up there. We helped those households. We have seen an increase in Hispanic, which is wonderful because we find that they don't technically come for services. They try to work it out in their families and so we have encouraged them to come. The average rent is enormous and it surpasses that number now, the eleven, that's just the average. I mean, we were seeing eighteen hundred, twenty-two thousand, twenty-two hundred, just having a really rough time. So I had, you can read this one, but this is one gal that I helped with water and Town of Woodfin water is a difficult thing to work with a lot because we don't have the fund for Woodfin water. And so we help when we can, but we also refer to the agency that helps. We did end up helping Michelle.
Did she get her job back?
Mm-hmm.
Good. Thank you.
And so one that I don't have on here that was pretty recent is a homeowner. She's seventy-nine and her son had been helping her pay her rent, I mean, her mortgage because she is a masseuse and she lost all her people after Helene. And so he then lost his job, but he lives in Baltimore. He'll get another job. We offered to help her with rent and she thought that was very sweet because we have the emergency fund. And she said, no, I, I just got hired, so I won't need your help, but thank you very much. So we see all of those things and we are just very thankful for your partnership.
Thank you. Question from council?
Any question? So that.
You want me to go back?
Well, just the budget, what has this been, was that last fiscal year or is that this fiscal year?
I believe that's from July to July.
Yeah, and actually exhausted. So that slide slightly updated. They actually exhausted on twenty-five thousand before the second, before we gave them a disbursement for this.
Right.
And remind everyone, what's the amount that we've allocated for them this year? Twenty-five thousand again. It was fifty, I thought.
Yeah, yeah, fifty thousand.
That's what I thought. Great. We use some of your taxpayer dollars to help people who get in trouble and ABCCM has been kind enough to be the vehicle for that for the town.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, oh wow, my favorite topic, Katie and Lily. We can talk about the Woodfin Community Garden that we're so proud of.
Hey. Awesome. Welcome. So we're here to give you an update on the Woodfin.
Record, state your name and if you live in Woodfin or not.
I'm Lily Dancy Jones. I am a Woodfin resident and homeowner.
And I'm Katie Cox and I am also a Woodfin resident and homeowner and part of the steering committee for the Woodfin Community Garden.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, we are the steering committee for the Woodfin Community Garden. And you've seen our faces before because we've been advocates for the garden and have been working at the garden project. So a little bit of background for those that that might not be familiar. The Woodfin Community Garden is a volunteer-led effort supported by Bonneville Cities and the Town of Woodfin. I want to thank you for your support. There's a recent photo of the garden and we're going to talk a little bit about how we got there.
So the Woodfin Community Garden was proposed to town council last spring, March twenty-twenty-four and an agreement was signed in July of that year. Soon after that, we had Hurricane Helene and so all the related, the recoveries related to that delayed us in being able to get the infrastructure ready to start the garden this year. However, we did stay close to our goals and made some modifications, but still did a lot of work. The town put in a water line and a spigot for us at the site and they also continue to provide waste and recycling pickup and a portable toilet for us. So we're really appreciative of that.
So our initial funding for startup in addition to the support from the town came from a tipping point grant we received from Buncombe County. So that was active fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. So we had to spend it all before the end of June. Got into the garden at the end of April. So it was a pretty quick turnaround, spending a lot of my weekends at Lowe's, loading up supplies. Think about what I can put on my credit card before some reimbursement. So we got all the tools and supplies we needed through that grant. We're really grateful for that grant.
And we then started our weekly volunteer workdays in May. And we, because of those workdays, we were able to meet our tipping point grant goals of hosting ten workdays in that fiscal year. So we just squished them all into like two months. And we built ten to twelve raised beds in that period of time. And this is a picture of some of our regular volunteers. And together, all together, we acquired about a hundred hours of working together in the garden.
Yeah, and that was just at the end of the fiscal year and we kept going. So we'll talk a little bit about that. And if you want to read our tipping point grant report, it's available on the Buncombe County website. So in May and June, we built twelve raised beds, filled them with new potting soil and planted them with donated plants and seeds. We were really excited to see a lot of different donations coming from a lot of different groups. We'll have a thank you slide a little later on. In addition to vegetables and herbs, we added beauty with some seasonal flowers, trying to make the garden a place that you're excited to drive by, that looks nice, kind of bringing some joy and some beauty to the community. We were able to build a tool shed. That was a really big accomplishment to have that infrastructure in in addition to the raised beds. And the tool shed and the water spigot are both secured with coated padlocks. So us, a few trusted volunteers have that code as well as the town and public works.
So since we couldn't really get anything into the ground until late in the season, we decided to tend the garden communally this year and share our harvests among the volunteers that are showing up regularly. We are currently surveying people to gauge interest in doing a, moving to like a rental plot model. And so far we've gotten seven or eight people that are interested in it. So we'll leave that open for a little while longer and move forward from there. And here's some pictures of some of our, our harvests, some things that are still growing and the planting and tending phases, I guess, too.
In that survey, at this point, you're not discussing prices?
The survey.
You're just gauging interest?
We're, we're gauging interest, yeah. One, one thing we're exploring with the survey is the willingness of people to pay a certain amount because we don't have any grant funding yet. Right now we're looking at if we don't have grant funding secured for next fiscal year, we may ask people that rent to contribute more, at least for this first year, so we can get some improvements done. We're also hoping that we can get some grant money and bring that, that cost down. But part of our survey is kind of seeing how people feel. About half the people that have filled out our survey are like, ah, you know, well, we'll do this if it's cheap, but we, we don't want to shell out a hundred bucks. And that a hundred dollars is about the cost per raised bed of the improvements that we want to do before we, we start the, the rental model. But we're always going to do a sliding scale, kind of a model is our idea.
If you have in the future, people who want a garden but just can't afford it, please let us know. We could, might be able to arrange for scholarships.
We, yeah, we, we talked about maybe reaching out if we got to a situation to maybe see if the town could help us in just purchasing some materials because that would be easier than giving us cash.
You reapply each year for the tipping point grant or was that a?
Yeah, well, so tipping point didn't happen because of Helene.
For this, correct.
But I believe information should be coming out soon about applications. It was about February is when we started working on that in, in twenty-twenty-four. So we're hoping that, that Buncombe County is able to provide that again. They took a year off for many understandable reasons.
Thank you. Yeah. And it is our understanding that groups can get it repeatedly.
Yeah, yep. So we've had just an amazing and diverse group of people come work with us in the garden and a diversity of ages as well. And so, you know, one of our goals of the garden was it was really a community space where people could come, have social connections, you know, participate in growing food, feel like they're doing something to help out the community. And it's, it's been a great effort for that. So we started a little kids' garden section that's been a fun success. We actually had a few new kids join us last week that came out and met us during open house. And we've also got some senior residents that are able to kind of come enjoy the garden at their own pace, not necessarily stay for the entirety of the workday, not necessarily do a bunch of hard labor, but feel like they can contribute. And also those are senior volunteers and participants especially, I think, really benefit from the social connections. A lot of them are retired and so they have a more of a, of a solitude in their daily lives. So they really kind of brighten up, come in and hanging out at the garden with us.
So when it was raining heavily during the summer, we found out that we had some drainage issues at the site. And we contacted Adrian and Shannon and they connected us with Johnny with the Public Works. And it was great. He came out and helped us dig trench behind our shed along Lookout Road. You can kind of see that in the picture where it's been a straight line has kind of been dug, dug out. And then they installed some pipe to help move the water that had been standing next to the shed. It was just like running off of the road and just hanging out in that low space. So it's.
I think one thing you all did I thought was really clever, the, and you can barely see it around the back, but was my understanding that the compost area, all of that was built out of just pallets that were found and put to, put to work there, which I thought was great.
We have some very handy volunteers, some of whom are like professional carpenters. And so that was a, yeah, a fun project that we did, yeah, using used pallets. The start of it was actually the pallet that the shed materials came on.
That's great.
So the, the garden in the last month or two has really just become a fun place to be and experience. You know, when we started at the site, it had a very sterile feeling. You know, the, the playground equipment had been removed and there just wasn't really anything there. And so now there's, there's life in there. There's flowers. There's people. We're starting to see wildlife. So we had a monarch butterfly. Katie captured that amazing picture of a monarch butterfly on our zinnias. We had some black swallowtail caterpillars that were really fun to, to watch munching on our dill. Fun thing for kids to experience as well, Downy woodpecker, other songbirds. We've had birds come to visit the sunflowers that we grew this summer. And so to have the garden be a place for people, but also for, for wildlife has been really cool. Kind of as we've moved towards the end of our fall season, we had a garden volunteer appreciation. So that's a picture of most of our garden volunteers kind of circled out there. We did a little garden tour, kind of celebrate our accomplishments.
And then just a couple of weeks ago, we hosted an open house at the garden and we had thirty attendees, including eight volunteers and over twenty first-time visitors to the garden. So that was really nice to see new faces showing up. And then the next week, we had four new volunteers come that had attended the open house. So it felt very successful to have that event.
Yeah. So one of the projects we've been working on throughout the summer has been sheet mulching the slope along Lookout Road. And so sheet mulching, you put down cardboard and then mulch and that's going to slowly kill the grass underneath and prepare it for planting. So our goal this fall is to put in native pollinator plants along that slope. We're partnering with several local schools and organizations. We're going to have plant donations come from Asheville Greenworks, also from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. We're working with French Broad River Academy. Some of the, the seventh grade boys are going to come do some tree planting with us in, in November and December. And then U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service is partnering with a class at Warren Wilson College. They're going to come out and help plant some pollinator plants on the slope. And our volunteers would be part of that process as well.
So these are sort of some numbers. We've discussed them a little bit already, but in total in twenty-twenty-five, up until a week ago, we have planted sixteen raised beds. And that includes constructing the beds, filling them with new potting soil, planting them. We've had thirty-five volunteer workdays, thirty garden volunteers and seventy-seven percent of them are actually Woodfin residents. There's been a total of three hundred and forty volunteer labor hours and ten steering committee meetings and hundreds of behind the scenes hours of planning, communications, grant reporting, buying supplies, et cetera. And then we received the five thousand dollar grant from Buncombe County and then additional donations valued at one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. And we do expect that to grow a little bit after we do the fall plantings with the trees and shrubs.
These numbers meant a lot to me, kind of putting them together. I've done a little bit of, you know, grant writing and stuff like that. And so kind of knowing the value of like, how are we matching? And so, you know, I feel like we did a really good job matching that five thousand dollar tipping point grant with the donations of materials and supplies we received, but with also the amount of volunteer labor we were going to bring in. But also I think, you know, it means a lot that over twenty Woodfin residents have come and had positive experiences and built community in that space. And those hundreds of behind the scenes hours, a lot of them are me and Katie, but also our partners, Russell, who's here today, and then my partner Con, they've been great sports as well, devoting a lot of time. So, so it's definitely a labor of love and I hope that you're also very impressed by these numbers.
I love how well you've documented everything because if nothing else, gives me hope that this could be duplicated somewhere else in town if we found the right people.
Yeah.
People can learn from what you did.
Absolutely. More gardens in Woodfin. We're here for it.
Yeah.
If we found you a site before next spring, could you pull it off again one more next year?
Let's give it a year's break. Let's let us, we have a lot to do with this one.
Yes, but not this coming year.
We may be close to having someone, not donate gibland, but allow that to be a long-term use of a lot.
Yeah, okay. Great. I mean, we definitely would like to be involved in that. I think we, there's a lot we still want to do with this space. But I think we've learned a lot. Something we, you know, didn't include a slide about, but we've also visited a lot of other community gardens. Katie especially has had some great connections with other community gardens. We visited the Lester Library Community Garden. We visited the Black Mountain Community Garden, the Lucy Herring Elementary Community Garden, as well as some others. And every time we go somewhere, we, we learn a lot by talking to those managers and seeing that space. So continuing to grow and evolve. So next year, we definitely plan to apply for grants. Tipping Point Grant hopefully will return. Buncombe County also has a Parks and Rep Grant I think we would be eligible for. And then we'll continue to look out as well for other opportunities. We want to improve the existing beds. So you can see a little bit in the picture. We did this block and board system that makes the bed safe. There's no screws or nails poking out anywhere even as they get older. It's also, it's a little bit easier to move them, but you can also build height over time. It's also, it's a little bit easier to move them, but you can also build height over time. And so the goal is that you can start to see on that one bed, we purchased a few extra corner blocks. It's part to kind of help our with our hose navigation. We want to raise them all an additional six inches and so that they have a foot in height. We feel like that's going to be a really good setup for residents to to have a rental plot. We want to implement a rental system for the twelve raised beds that we set up that you can see there. But also, we want to continue to expand in other areas of the garden so that we still have places for communal planting where volunteers can come and participate. Maybe they don't want to commit to a rental bed, but they like to come, you know, several times a month and help out and maybe take a little produce home and also look into how we can can donate and share produce with people in the in the community as well.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, and like, thinking back to when we did our initial interest surveys, like, two years ago, and how how many people said that they wanted to participate in the garden to grow food, to share with the community or donate to a food pantry. Like, I feel like that having, building out that communal area continues to be an important thing to us.
Yeah.
If I could just borrow an idea from another community garden I'm aware of as a suggestion to consider. They set aside an area strictly for growing flowers, which they then sold and went to raise money. It was a great fundraiser and it's year round because of bloom times and stuff.
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah. Cut flower bed was one of the things you talked about us looking into. Yeah. We really want to build a information kiosk, but a kiosk that would have a place where we could have, you know, information guidelines for visiting the garden, be able to share upcoming events. But also, if we could build it in to have a space where there could be like produce people could come pick up that had already been harvested. We want to add some art to the garden. We have a wonderful volunteer that's a retired art teacher that has some great ideas for us there. And then sustainable design features. One example, we've actually already had a consulting meeting with Riverlink about managing the runoff from the parking lot that kind of drains into to close to the entryway to the garden from the parking area. So they've got some great suggestions and a guide on installing rain gardens. And so they would help us out with with that.
I'm sure the YMCA nutrition program would love to be in touch as well with the Woodfinn mobile market that they have too as time goes on. So I think that'd be a wonderful partnership for you as well.
Yeah, we recently talked about a goal of hopefully by next summer, when they do those monthly markets, to be able to go and bring our little yellow tent and have some some food to share.
Thanks.
So if I could, I think I'm probably the only one up here who knew Miss Maney. She was a beloved math teacher for the north, north area for decades, decades and decades. She was a wonderful woman. She grew minds. I think she would be so pleased by this. So thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was trying to tear up while you were talking. She would be so happy.
Yeah, and we we read about her when we started the project. And so we we tried to be intentional with the ma, the name of it being the Woodfinn Community Garden at Geneva Maney Park and being able to to retain her legacy. Thank you for sharing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I went to your open house or real open garden on October 4th and was very impressed with what you've done and your, the way you structured your plans for the garden, but also governance and where you want to go forward and the amount of work you've done since, I think you said May. The one suggestion I have is that in Woodfinn, gradually, incrementally, slowly, we're trying to create a sense of community identity. And the garden seems like a great place for an event that might include your vendors, your partners, people interested in gardening. And the town might be able to, if we approved it, some modest funding for such an event. We need, the town is in need, in my opinion, of more events where people in Woodfinn gather and realize that they're part of this community. Something to think about.
Yeah, I think definitely there's there's possibility of of having it be a space where people can gather to garden, but also to learn. We have, you know, kind of some informal classes, come and and share knowledge. And it's great that it's a good family space being fenced in, so.
And you already have, you've already started, your October 4th was a community garden day.
Yeah.
You've already started an event that could possibly.
Yeah, so repeating that, yeah, in the future.
With some of your partners, you know, I've looked at the list of your partners and thinking, boy, that would be nice if they were, some of them were there too, especially some of the kids from French Broad that are putting in some time. But something to think about.
Yeah, and I think we've, we haven't, we've done some, but not a whole lot of of reaching out to businesses in the area because we've really just been scrambling to get things done. But we've, you know, everyone we've asked for something, we've gotten support. So we'll start asking for more.
In that arena, talk to Council member Urban. She's on part of the Woodfinn Business Association. They might be willing to, they might be interested in helping.
Great.
Is that your last slide?
Yeah.
Yep.
On behalf of the people of Woodfinn, thank you for what you've done. We really appreciate it. Sure.
I just also wanted to recognize Woodfinn Water, who supplies water for me.
Oh, yes, great.
Yes, yeah, thank you. We'll add them to that list.
Yes, yeah, I wish, I, I don't, I wasn't sure how that was going to, we'll add them to our list. It's a separate entity.
They've committed to the mayor that if we do this in the future, as far as they see now, they will supply Woodfinn Water at no charge to the future Woodfinn Community Gardens.
That's awesome. Yeah, we really appreciate that. That's a big.
Thank you, ladies. Any other questions, council members? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up are reports, updates from our subcommittees, of which there are two. Ken, you want to go first?
We do not have an update for this session.
Nor does the other task force. One of our key members retired suddenly, so we are now, as of this afternoon, trying to set up the first meeting of the Community Partnerships Task Force. So there aren't, there's only those two, right?
I don't really have an update except to say that we did meet. And our next meeting is scheduled, I believe, in early November. Our next meeting, I believe, is scheduled in early November. We talked about a range of issues, including the old Craggy Bridge. And I believe that there's a small group, Shannon, you may be part of it, that's working on a service area.
We met and.
Oh, you didn't meet it?
Yeah, the engineer is going to be sort of summarizing, like, how many linear meters each are. Trying to kind of come up with the scope of what would be required.
When I said service area, it's what would be required. Just understanding the dimensions of the parts of West Woodfinn that we're interested in getting that down in detail first.
Great. Just a question, the appearance of a subcommittee report section, will that be in every meeting going forward? I would, I would like it to be so we don't have to keep adding it. Just assume that there will be the potential for updates each month.
We can do that, but I think we're thinking maybe more quarterly or or do.
Or upon.
Communications.
Or upon request if there's something.
Yeah, yeah, we can always do that. Any other questions from council about those? Shannon, Town Manager Report.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. So to begin this report, we'll talk very quickly about our Helene recovery process or progress. So beginning with our FEMA public assistance projects, we're making progress, slow, but sure. Our engineers have submitted a revised damage inventory and a much more detailed cost estimate to the FEMA project managers, and we're hopeful that that will both clarify some of the eligibility concerns that they had previously expressed, as well as demonstrate that this is really, falls in the category of a large project. And so FEMA has distinctions between small and large projects. And when you're a large project, you have a little bit more flexibility. So we're hopeful that that will stick and we'll be able to move that along. We have focused on stormwater to try to figure out what it is exactly that FEMA needs. And so we've been, once we get that figured out with stormwater, we're going to apply it to roads. And because it's a very much similar situation. And so already, our engineers are looking at a revised damage inventory and that detailed cost estimate for roads as well to get that started in the FEMA review process. Debris invoices, that was an error. They're not obligated, but they're very close to being obligated. So we're really excited because that's a pretty big dollar item. And we, it really literally is coming down to just dealing with some software technical issues where our FEMA representative, who is looking at those invoices for us, can't open, serve it certain Excel files. We're having to convert the files. So anyway, we'll, we'll get it all done and it should be fine. We have approved the Riverside Park costs. So once we learned that the Buncombe County Passive Recreation Subcommittee was recommending us for approval for our passive rec grant, that helped kind of solidify our plan for moving forward. So any FEMA money will just be sort of added to the list of revenues for the Riverside Park Phase Two part of the project. So that's, that should be moving along and should be obligated soon. The Silverline Park construction bid we're working on right now, we got the updated bid tab from the consultants. And so that should be posted, if not this week, the end of this week, early next week. But it's it's imminent and that will be posted. Once we get the construction bids, then hopefully we'll be able to get them obligated by FEMA as well. So I think all of these, with the exception of possibly stormwater and roads, should be obligated in time for the eighteen month deadline of March 28th. Roads and culverts, we're expecting to apply for extensions.
Shannon, may I ask you a question? I attended the Woodfinn Water Board Meeting yesterday, and Seth said that they have money due to them, but due to the government shutdown, the FEMA money has to go to the state and then from the state to the recipient. And then until the shutdown ends, they're not going to get any of their money. Would that apply to us?
It could. I don't, I don't know why it wouldn't.
Sherry raised, right?
It's all that, it's always been that way. When a project is obligated from FEMA, I mean, they fully vetted and are in approval, then it goes to the state emergency management for similar process, much abbreviated but similar process. The state, it's all pass through money. The state actually spends every check.
And the, and our understanding is FEMA is one of the critical services, federal government critical services that is continuing to operate despite the government shutdown.
Thank you.
And then lastly, we did meet with the FEMA Community Liaison to just sort of help us at through these sort of late stage issues that we're experiencing with some of our PA projects. And she's committed to attending all of our group meetings moving forward. So I think that was a very productive meeting, and we look forward to having her participation and support. Looking at long term recovery, the Buncombe, the public input for the Buncombe County Helene Recovery Plan has closed. We received four comments for Woodfinn, and none of the comments necessitated any kind of consideration or change in the plan. The, the, just as a reminder, there was significant community input at the beginning of this process. So before the plan was developed, there was an extensive community survey that went out. The participation on that first stage of community input was a lot more significant than at this late stage. And I I wonder, I can't help but wonder if that is, if the low participation during this draft review is in part because so many people participated in the survey at the beginning, and that's basically what guided the development of the plan. The next step is the plan will go to the Buncombe County Commissioners for adoption in November. I think it's November 18th. And then after that, it would go to the local governments or the other municipalities for adoption in December or shortly thereafter. We are also exploring different grant options. We're looking right now at two for stormwater, the DPS Disaster Relief Mitigation Funding and the HMGP Advanced Assistance Funding, one specifically for Weaver, Weaverville Road and the other for both Weaverville Road and possibly some of our other funding culvert needs around town. We're also looking to apply for a grant from the Office of State and Budget Management. This is a very interesting grant. I think it's $15 million total, specific to Helene affected areas and specifically to address needs that were denied by FEMA. And you have to have that denial in order to apply. So we are going to be applying for our Coffer Dam that was not funded by FEMA, the repair to the Coffer Dam. And well, we're considering looking at some of the roads that had to be excluded, the little, the slides that occurred. And we might be trying to add those in, although I don't know that for sure yet. And then our climate smart communities initiative is also in process. It's really interesting. They're doing some really good hazard mitigation, threat assessment studies for Woodfinn and Swananoa. We're going to be able to use some of the data, even though this project isn't complete. We're going to use some of that data for our grant applications. So we hope that that'll help bolster and demonstrate the the need and the extent of the threat that we're under. And then lastly, the ball field restoration is once again in process. They have reseeded again. I think this time they, well, they brought, first of all, they did a heavy screening, so they removed a lot more of that, sort of that rocky debris and kind of woody debris. They brought in fill dirt, kind of to help smooth it out and level it all out. And then they reseeded, and I believe this time they hydro seeded and used a tackifier to help bind the seed to the soil. So hopefully, the germination will be more successful this time. This is the right time of year to do this work. So, you know, we're optimistic that this can be ready in time for soccer season in the spring. Any questions about Helene recovery before I move on?
I have a comment, not a question. As I meet people in town, a lot of people ask me how the Helene post-recovery and repair is going with the parks and roads and the wave. And I just want to commend you and the staff, and it's what I tell people. It's a huge undertaking. It's one of those undertakings where the adjective Herculean is at. And it's not just the undertaking itself, it's the changing guidelines, the, oh, well, now this is happening. Instead, the snafus that constantly arise and that we're lucky to have a professional competent staff that is very hands on in managing this complex Herculean effort. My compliments to the staff. Andy?
Thank you.
Well, sir. Ditto.
Well, thank you for that. And I'll just go ahead and move on. Covering our regular town update, first in the administration department, reporting on contracts and agreements that have come in the last thirty days, we've had two. One small contract with Land of Sky for $6,888. That, or eight, eighty dollars, that is a not to exceed contract. So we work with Land of Sky annually. We have this contract for GIS technical support. So Land of Sky handles all of our GIS zoning needs. So when we update zoning, we do rezonings or update zoning layer, they actually take care of that for us. And they've helped us with some other sort of one off GIS tech needs over the years as well. So it's an hourly rate, not to exceed the amount shown. We've also renewed our agreement with Buncombe County Board of Elections. It was just outdated. It was time to renew it. That doesn't specifically include costs. It just says that we will be responsible for those costs. We are required by law to perform these services. And so sort of doesn't, unfortunately, it doesn't really matter what the costs are because we're on the hook for it. And it's variable. It will depend from election to election, depending on what other elections are occurring. So if you have state or federal elections happening at the same time, then the fees are less. If you do early voting, the fees, there's additional costs that get added. So it all depends on what the services are that you're requiring for that particular election. Other great news is we received the update that we are looking at a clean audit for fiscal year 2025. That is huge. I mean, not only does it keep our clean audit streak going, which is awesome, but for any, for all, of all years to have a clean audit this year is particularly impressive. So congratulations. To Sherry and our finance staff, there is a lot of extra work that went into preparing for the audit this year. We had a single audit, we had another audit that is like a single audit. And a lot of having to document and substantiate those hurricane related expenses and to kind of balance and explain why the revenues aren't matching the expenses because we haven't received the revenues yet, that's, that's a pretty complicated process. And but it all worked out and our auditor felt very comfortable with things. So we are expecting the auditor's presentation next month, at next month's meeting. We also launched Text My Gov last week, so that's primarily an emergency or urgent messaging system that folks can opt into. And when the town needs to send an emergency notice, we can do it through Text My Gov. It's, it's not meant to replace Facebook or some of our other media platforms that we use to push out notices and information. It's really more for the more critical and and serious announcements, but really super helpful to have. And it, it integrates with the iPOS emergency messaging system as well so that if there was an iPOS announcement that is pushed out, if you are, even if you're not a Woodfinn. if you were, even if you're not a Woodfin resident, but you happen to be traveling in Woodfin, you would receive that iPaws message as well. So it's a really sophisticated system and we're excited to have it now at our, at our disposal.
Shannon, are y'all putting that out on the, the ticker thing out front for people to sign up?
The marquee.
Have we done that? Sorry. No, I couldn't remember.
I'll have to check and make sure that it's out on the sign that we put it on our social media.
Yeah, it's definitely, it's definitely got it on social media. The easiest way for people to sign up is to scan the QR code and we can't do the QR code on that sign. We could do the website.
Yeah.
Yep. Our records management work, Gina, our clerk, has continuing her work on that. And then our Helene Anniversary Newsletter has gone to the printers and should be mailed soon. And then lastly, grant management, there's been a lot of grant management work, whether it's FEMA or, or others, or things that we're looking at and going to webinars and work sessions just to kind of learn about these opportunities. In the planning, stormwater and flood divisions, we have, in planning departments, we're doing, or we've just completed the policy review for the code update. And we're moving into what's called the code diagnosis stage. So our consultants, I'm pretty sure are planning their second visit to Woodfin because that's a pretty big meaty thing to tackle is the code diagnosis. And we probably need to, we meet and we kind of go through the code in some detail. So we look at each section and we identify what works well, what doesn't work well, what's inconsistent with state law, what has to be updated versus what we want to update. And then we look at the policy review and what that is really telling us in terms of how do we want to drive or how do we want to direct our code updates? And then the consultant takes that and offers recommendations. We're also doing some enforcement investigations. Enforcement sort of waxes and wanes. You know, we'll, we'll have no complaints or no concerns for months and then all of a sudden you'll get six and then you'll go out. So right now we seem to be in one of those waxing phases where we have gotten some calls and so we've been checking into things. I'm going to talk about enforcement again later in the agenda. Stormwater is still working on the permit closeout and annual inspections. So that is what's dominating work right now. But we have also been doing a little bit of research into some historical flood data, particularly for Weaverville Road as we prepare for these grants, looking at how many times it's experienced flash flooding over the years. So we've done everything from looking online at newspaper articles, looking through police records, looking, or asking MSD, DOT if they have records so that we can kind of put that together for our grant applications. In the Public Works and Facilities Department, we continue the playground improvements for Roy Pope. We got the benches installed today. Yay. They look great. They're, they're very similar to what we had before, even though we couldn't get the exact replacements. They're, I think they're close enough and they look, they match with the equipment that we have. So I think that was a good find. We continue to search for the canopy. The idea of fabricating a canopy to go on the structure that we currently have has proven not to be feasible. It is a combination, as I understand it, is a combination of the structure with the canopy that has to be certified to withstand a certain amount of snow and wind shear. So it actually often requires a building permit and they check that. And so no fabricator and no manufacturer is going to be able to do that with the structure, retrofitting that to a structure that already exists.
Did you talk to ABL to see whether or not that they?
We talked to A Fabricate. I don't know if it was ABL or if it was another fabricator.
ABL.
So, yeah.
You did talk to ABL and they can't? That's surprising.
I mean, they can do it. They can create something, but it's not going to meet the certification requirements for playgrounds.
I just find, I'm just, I'm surprised because of what they make and they, wind shear is what they make.
Yeah. It's, so there's a difference. So there is a difference between making something that could work versus making, they could make something that could work. I have no doubt.
Right.
But it wouldn't meet the certification requirements for playgrounds. So that's, that's the hiccup. And, and because of potential liability and stuff like that, a lot of those fabricators wouldn't want to unless it was their equipment, you know, that they can absolutely certify is okay. So, so more than likely, we're going to have to replace the whole structure. So we're starting to look at those, what those options might be like.
Is an option just to wait until we do the big construction project?
Yeah, that's an option as well. We're just kind of, we're not committing to purchasing any structures right now. We're just sort of looking at what's out there.
So playground equipments, they don't, like, they don't have replacement for that?
This particular fabricator, manufacturer of this equipment and that canopy, they, no, they do not make that anymore. So it's obsolete. And that's the problem we've run into with much of the repairs here is that it's obsolete and we've had to have other fabricators, you know, make it work. We're also, we've also gotten some quotes for the bathroom and kitchen remodel in Public Works. So we hope to get that work scheduled and started soon. The paving in front of the building is nearing completion. Hopefully will be done this week. And then lastly, the free bulky item collection is scheduled for the first week of November, November 3rd through the 7th. We've already pushed this out on social media. We'll do it, we'll continue to do that every week until the week that we actually perform the collection. So and that is the, the fall collection and we'll do another collection in the spring. That's just what the town has historically done and we think that's a good practice. So we'll continue to do that.
And you'll put that on the marquee as well?
Yeah, if it's not already. The bulky item collection, is that on the market?
Not yet.
Not yet.
No, but it will be.
Okay. Lastly, in the Police Department, the mayor announced the good news that we received a Department of Justice Grant for $183,069. And as was explained, that is primarily to fund a single part-time employee for those policy updates. They will also work with the Power DMS software and the modest evidence room upgrade as well. We also are cashing in the points for the Governor's Highway Safety Program. So by participating in this program, the Woodfin Police Department earns certain points. And then after a period of time, after you accumulate those points, you can cash them in for certain equipment items. And so in this case, they're all kind of highway safety related equipment items, but very useful for the Police Department. And so that is also being cashed in now.
Shannon, do the points expire?
I don't know.
They build up over?
They roll.
They roll. Okay. Just curious.
I also had the pleasure of participating in the Chief's inaugural Faith Alliance meeting that was held last week. And it was a really rewarding experience to be able to meet with the leaders of our different faith institutions. And, you know, with the idea and the recognition that we all are here to serve our community and in different ways and sometimes in similar ways. And how do we do that to support each other, not get in the way of each other and maybe collaborate in the future? So there were a couple of ideas about collaboration that were shared. The idea is that these will be held every quarter and then have, I think we'll probably get increasing participation and hopefully that will kind of continue.
How, how many entities participate, different churches or entities?
This time we, I think we only had four, with four, besides ourselves, excuse me. But I think there are 18 institutions, 16, 18. So we expect, there were, we expected more. There were a couple of last minute cancellations. And I think there, as others learn what we're doing, I think we'll get more participation.
So that's staff and pastors or representatives of different churches are inaugural recurrent. Are council members invited or encouraged to attend or perhaps not?
I think it's probably most productive. I mean, I think there could be meetings where we have council members attend, but as a general rule, I think it's most productive to focus between police and the faith leaders. I, even myself, I don't think I should be attending every time, but.
So it's a safety conversation then?
It's a combination of just how I think you can collaborate to work together. So, you know, we talked about potentially doing more for National Night Out next year and having the churches participate more. We talked about emergency response plans for institutions, you know, why recreate, recreate the wheel and what kind of services the Police Department offers those institutions.
If it is quarterly, I would love one of those quarters for council to be invited to attend. I'd like to meet some of these people and that's the perfect setting.
If that's in building, building community, absolutely.
Yeah, it's just, yeah. We can, we can discuss that more. And that concludes my town manager's update.
Other questions for Shannon before we move on?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. And Woodfin Police Department, thank you so much. Also participated in the Board of Elections Incident Action Plan for municipal elections. And so and that's for this upcoming election and preparation of the upcoming elections.
Thank you very much. We now move to new business. The first item is interviews and appointment of an ABC board member. I didn't get any feedback to my email that I sent to council members suggesting that nobody has to play a role, that I'd be happy to ask the questions. I'll move them along quickly. If that's okay, I'll do that. And that way y'all can listen.
I appreciate that.
And add questions. And I'm suggesting that we, for lack of a better way, we do it in reverse alphabetical order by last name.
And I'd like to talk about something first.
Okay.
If you don't mind, please.
Absolutely.
What I have thought about at length is the current status of the ABC board of three. That's really hard. If someone goes on vacation, someone's out with an illness, it makes it really complicated and it's harder to get business done at that point. We have recently heard that the water board here, the, is, the Woodfin Water Board is considering and would like to go to five members for this same issue. And we also have, when we had opened up positions, we had, I think, one available for the Parks and Community Enrichment Committee. We then realized that each person who had applied to that one opening had a great skill set that would benefit us fully. And so my thought is at this point that I would like us to talk about, and I'm willing to make a motion if we, after talk about it, if we agree, we'd like to move that way. And that would be to move our ABC board from three members to five members. And since we had three people apply for openings, to make those three people our current members in addition to Ms. Wald and our Chair, Mr. Stur. So that is something I've thought about. I wanted to throw that out there for discussion and felt like it was best to do it at this point in time.
What would that do to your cost, Bob? Is it 150 a month per?
It's $1,800 per year for board member.
Thirty-six hundred. Thoughts, input?
I mean, we have a difficult time frequently getting people to volunteer and I'm excited that for this one spot, we had three. Last time for the Parks Group, we had three. And then looking at everything that's been submitted by them. And also this time, got a wide range of background and experience. And so I will shut up and.
So last time with the Parks, we actually interviewed them first and heard what they had to say. And then we were able to see the strength that each applicant had. Whereas we don't know the strengths of these three applicants until we hear them talk. So I would feel more comfortable addressing this after having heard everyone speak. I, I don't know.
Tonight?
I, I don't know, but I, I can't in good, I can't in good faith say, yeah, let's do that until I hear which each one of these people have to say.
So you're saying, don't do it just because we have three applicants?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Because with the, with the Parks, we heard everyone and they were like, oh gosh, they're all, they all bring something different to the table. They're all strong. Let's do this to do. But this, I, I don't know that it's comparable because we don't, we don't know their opinion on things and we haven't interviewed them. So that's my only concern about going at it this way.
I put a different point of view on the table. I, I would do this regardless of the candidates. I think in the abstract, it just makes sense. You're going to get a broader diversity of opinion and it may be harder to fill at times. We hope not. I'm not using your name in vain, by the way, Phil.
How would you stagger these terms if you did it, Ken?
It's dictated by the commission.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so if you decide, I looked this up, if you decide to add two members to the board at this, at this point in time, there are, those two members along with their reappointing member will serve three returns going forward. So it'll be, there'll be a cycle where you have three members to replace at one time.
Every three years and then one member every year.
Every other year.
Every other year.
Maybe off year.
So Ken, I'm not opposed to doing a five-member board. It's just doing it with this group of people because we haven't, we don't know anything about them. Or, I mean, we know some things about them.
I'd be happy to wait, but to me, it doesn't matter so much who the specific candidates are as the correctness of actually just making it a more robust board. And so we could do it after, we could do it before. I'm kind of indifferent to that. If the fact that we might have three good candidates is, is gravy, but I like the idea in general, just, just absent the personnel, I think, I think it's going to make for a stronger board.
Yes. But then if we were to do this, then it should be open to let others know that we are feeling, filling three seats, not one seat. So other people may, in theory, have wanted to apply if they didn't think that the competition was as much. I don't mean that it's a competition, but that there, there will be. Yeah. So that, I mean, that's my hesitation.
Other thoughts from Councilmember Thornton or Cohen?
I can be conned. Take my name. That's, he mentioned this to me a couple of days ago and I've been thinking about it and I'm not a priori opposed to it. But I do like the idea of learning more about it before I actually vote on it. And by that, I mean, what do peer or boards in peer municipalities do? I'd be interested in hearing from the two members of our board, current board in a structured way, what they think about the idea. I don't even know if in Buncombe County, it's typical or atypical. It seems to me, I'm not opposed to it a priori. I feel like I don't have any evidence or data yet to make an intelligent decision.
John, a question for you procedurally.
This one is blessedly simple compared to a lot of things, statute. And then looking, I would add to what Chair Stur said is it is for, would be for a three-year term for the new, two new seats you would create. All it says is that if a board is initially a three-member board, the appointing authority, you determines a five-member board is preferable. The terms of the two new board members, three years. That's it. That's the sum total of the procedure right there. Just determine that it's preferable.
And John, does that mean that your options are always going to be odd, three or five?
Yes, sir.
It just?
So the, the de facto is three.
So you don't have ties?
You can opt to five. The only thing I will add to that, I think I may have mentioned to you before, but once you have gone to five, you cannot, you can go back to three only with the permission of the state ABC Commission.
Okay.
What that would be, why, what they would need to give you permission or they don't know. But I would, I would think, you know, we're having trouble filling this board now.
That's an interesting data point. That is, I'd be interested in knowing whether people have trouble when they have five and have difficulty going back to three. But as I said, I feel like I don't have any data yet to make a informed decision.
The Chair of the Board has his hand up. Is it okay to let him speak?
Sure. Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, we're just, my reading of the commission rules is that if you decide to go to three, back to three members at some point, you can, you have to get approval from the commission and you have to do it at the end of terms. You can't just dismiss people summarily from the board.
And Bud, do you know, do you know anything about how difficult it is to get that permission to go from, but shouldn't arise?
My assumption, just reading the, the regulations is it's not a problem. It's really, you know, generally it's at the discretion of the appointing authority, whether they want to have a three-member or five-member board. I mean, I have a call into the commission to ask them some other questions. I could certainly pose that question to them when I talk to them, but.
I'd be interested in their response to that.
I, I don't think it, I think it's going to be up to you guys.
Stay at the podium if you don't mind, Councilmember Thornton.
If we go to five board members, would that present any type of problem for you?
It's not a problem. We have to get a bigger table at the ABC store for the meeting.
Are you saying you're going to need a bigger table?
Yeah, I think we'll need a bigger table. Yeah, I think we'll need a bigger table. And, you know, we mentioned the expense already. I think there's some, some value to doing it. And I think it, you know, I don't have a strong opinion either way. And now, in terms of a problem, I don't see it being a problem at all.
Be $3,600 less that'll come to our Parks fund.
I was going to mention that, but you already did.
Yeah, it's a...
And I'm thinking too, we did put out a notice for anyone who wanted to apply for a position. That was out. And anyone who wanted to apply did at that point. So, I'm not comfortable that there are 50 people waiting in the wings to apply for this.
Realizing that I don't have a vote, it, I hate the fact that, I mean, if we'd had five applicants, would we want to add five seats? Why are we, why are we doing this on short notice, simply based on math instead of need?
Because part of it was me listening to the other boards, talking about the problems that they are having with only two members.
Is it, is it a perceived problem with your board?
Uh, it's been a perceived problem last few months because we thought we only had two members.
Exactly.
Uh, but when we had three members on the board, it wasn't particularly a problem. I was going to address one other question that came up, was about what, what the other systems in Buncombe County have. And it's a mixed bag. Asheville obviously has five. It's a big system. Black Mountain has three. We have three. Louisville, I don't recall now. Fletcher, which is, or Blue Ridge, which is now combined, it was recently merged. Fletcher and Laurel Park, I believe, were combined. That has five members. But I think that's because of the politics involved in merging the two systems.
Just as a point of information, the statute that started all this, and you said that it'd be a three-member board unless you opt for five, is from 1937.
So, after prohibition and...
There's two, there's two questions on the table. Do we want to expand to five? And the second question is, do you want to interview candidates before you make that decision?
Can I add one additional?
Sure.
Of course, sure. I would love with everybody's bus to move this forward tonight. We have, we have left Bob and Connie not crippled, but certainly at a disadvantage because we did not want to appoint the...
Well, we didn't know.
Well, I'm, I'm saying, I think this is a great time to remedy that. And this is a good opportunity to do it. I know that there's always more information we can get. But in my experience, the value of a perfect information is usually more than you can afford. And so, I think, I'd love to, I'd love people to consider whether we have enough information to move forward tonight, possibly after the interviews.
Only one candidate robustly applied. The others just, you know, did, named date of birth. What's the pleasure of the board?
We did not ask for anything more than to fill out that application.
That's a really skimpy application.
I might disagree with that.
Yeah, what you apply for and not say anything about your experience.
I think that, I might disagree with that. And so, I think there are questions, and people can decide how little or how much they want to respond.
Of course, yeah.
And I say that because I'm the kind of person that usually responds a lot.
Yeah, but that's, most people, most people, when they fill out the application, they understand there's going to be an interview process. And the interview is when you tease, when you tease out their experiences and whatnot. So, I think that, that's, some people would be like you, but other people would think, oh, well, this is all going to come out. And...
This is what I'm saying.
Fair enough. I accept that.
Okay, folks. So, how do you, it's not an agenda item, I guess, in a way it is. So, is there a motion to be made?
I cannot vote to fill seats that I do not hear what the applicants have to say.
Well, do we want to have a motion first, or?
There is no motion on the table yet.
Sounds like we need a motion to begin the interview process. I don't know.
Well, unless there's a different motion, we will do that. Because that's the next step on the agenda, Ken.
Or do we, do we move to go to five, a five-member board first?
If you do that, do you bother interviewing them? Do you bother interviewing them?
Well, they are, they are separate questions.
You'd have to still vote on each one of them.
Right. And just because we make, if we make it a five-member board, I think this is unlikely, but it doesn't necessarily guarantee that we're, we're, all three of these people are going to...
That, that's true. Yeah. That, that's true, except that it's kind of assumed. If we wanted to vote next month to make it a five-member board, and then if we were to invite the other two applicants that were not chosen to fill those seats, then we could, like, do it that way. And to me, if we do five-member board, we're kind of pressured into filling those, those three seats tonight.
But at the same time, this was out there for people to apply for a seat on that board. And we had three people apply. So, I look at it, I see both sides of that very simply.
Okay. There is no motion on the floor. So, unless someone makes one, I'm going to ask the first candidate to come in to be interviewed.
Could I, could I have another minute before you do that?
May I fill up my water bottle?
Yes, you may.
That time.
All right.
Okay. All right. I can certainly do that.
Yeah. That's a good idea.
Can you then make another motion after the interviews? Okay. There's no prejudice. Haven't voted on the same, similar motion twice.
Yeah, I would think so. If it doesn't, well, good question. It would be a different motion. Yeah.
Well, it's your pleasure, Councilmember Thornton.
The question, the motion was to move to a five-member board, either conduct your interviews, and then afterward maybe raise that motion again.
Oh, I was... Yeah, can we do that?
Or you could wait until next month and make up your mind.
I'd rather move one way or another tonight with it.
Right, unless there's a...
So would I.
Just in case that one seat doesn't get filled. I do want to say, I don't know what to do about this. I, I disagree with the opinion that you were given from the commission about that.
Are you gonna, are you intended, are you going to write a letter to him? And, because it could happen to get in the future.
To somebody else.
Yeah.
I'm a little surprised to see the opinion was based on, I mean, the statute says that when a vacancy occurs, or a term ends, the board, the appointing authority shall fill it. What was the opinion given back was, that means you should do it right away. And then it was like an assumption that there was no, like, nothing, no authority signed in for the idea that that meant that appointing ended.
Well, why, why weren't we made aware of this? I didn't learn about it until tonight.
Well, I didn't know. And then the commission usually deals with its ABC boards that are on the local level, not, like, wouldn't have to communicate with you.
Well, I guess for, for future reference, call us, call me.
I don't know that there's any way we necessarily...
Yeah, it wasn't, you know, it wasn't clear to me after the council deferred a decision. It wasn't clear to me after the council deferred a decision that she was still officially a member of the board. And that's why I contacted the commission to get clarification. And I didn't realize that the board, the town council was under the impression that she was going to continue that role.
So, lesson learned. Okay.
Okay. Well, I would like to go ahead and make a motion.
And which is?
I will make a motion to increase the Woodfin ABC Board from three to five members and appoint all three candidates to the ABC Board. And that would be the three who have applied, Michael Carroll, Jackie Craig, and Ronnie Lunsford.
So, you're moving to do that without interviews?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
I will call the roll. Councilmember Cohen.
Uh, next.
That's a no, no. Councilmember Irvin.
Aye.
Councilmember Con.
Aye.
Councilmember Thornton.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Nay.
It's three, two. So, I guess we can go, if someone will go bring them in, we will let them know that they're, they're all appointed. Jesus.
You see the squirrel on the train?
No. Oh, yeah. It's just a squirrel.
It's a squirrel, but he's sitting here watching. He just, he just ran back.
Whatever you do, don't name it. And you'll have to keep it.
Gentlemen, gentlemen and lady, you're, congratulations. We have expanded your board to five members, and you are all three appointed. Do you accept your appointment? Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Ms. Jackie?
Yes.
Mr. Ronnie?
Yes.
Then the deal is done. Thank you for your service and get to work.
Bruce, we're on you.
Go and prosper and make our store the best store there is. And please include in your discussion that billboard, because billboards make lots of money potentially. Us, if any of the three of them want to make a comment, you don't have to, but I feel like we asked you here and we sequestered you in a room for an hour and a half. Do you want to say anything to us or just go home to supper?
Well, I appreciate it.
Come to the podium if you don't mind, because you're being recorded. Mr. Michael?
I'm not going to be here long. I appreciate the opportunity. My wife and I are leaving community service. And in my case, I've had something that I've been doing for years come open. And I've got more time. And I'm really glad to have a chance to serve the community.
Thank you for volunteering to do it.
Yeah, thank you.
Jackie, any comment? You don't have to. Okay. Mr. Lunsford? Okay. All right, folks. Thank you very much. We will move to the next item of new business, which is municipal code enforcement overview.
Okay. So, this, I'm going to start just by explaining a little bit about what I hope to cover. Code enforcement, municipal code enforcement is a, it's a big topic. And what I'm, what my goal is tonight is just to introduce you to code enforcement, where authority comes from, what are the categories of code enforcement, a little more detail about some of the challenges related to those enforcement categories, and then conclude with a description of the process and other considerations and possible next steps. So, I do apologize. This is a little bit of a long presentation, longer than I usually do. But it's just hard to even do a summary overview without kind of getting into some details. So, to begin, to talk about our authority, a municipality's authority to enforce laws and ordinances comes from the North Carolina General Statutes in the state of North Carolina. And that more specifically is from Chapter 160A Cities and Towns. So, 160A is the chapter that establishes that cities and towns have certain authority and responsibilities. It also establishes other rules that we have to follow, rules that we've commonly talked about, such as public meetings and quarums, personnel, taxes, law enforcement, things like that. So, so, 160A covers a lot of aspects of municipal government, governance. You'll also hear people talk about whether or not North Carolina is a home rule or a Dillon's Rule state. And the truth is, we're really a hybrid. We're sort of neither, or we're both. We're kind of a weird little mix. Home rule is when the state broadly grants municipalities authority to adopt standards and enforce those standards. And they just sort of turn it over to the states and the states run with, or, excuse me, the municipalities, and they run with it. Dillon's Rule is often represented as the opposite of home's, home rule. It really isn't the opposite. They're not exactly apples to apples. Dillon's Rule really refers to judicial interpretation as it relates to municipal authority. So, it's not exactly the same thing, but just understanding that it's, it's, it's kind of on the opposite end of the spectrum, or it gets applied, I guess, when you look at, when you're not a home rule state, if that makes sense. So, anyway, it's confusing. But the General Assembly's directive is that municipal powers are broadly construed. So, that's sort of that home rule kind of piece to allow for those additional supplementary powers that are necessary for municipalities to carry out our duties. So, they say, you have to do these things, and we're going to give you some authority to be able to do those things. However, and this is the important piece to remember, is that the powers are always subject to state law. So, that's really fundamentally what I want you to take away from our authority or where our authority comes from, is that it's state-granted power. We don't have it without the state telling us we have it. It does not give us the inherent authority that a home rule state does. And all of our authority is delegated through our state statutes. So, our statutes have to specifically give us that authority. And of course, the power is not guaranteed. The state can change the rules, they can amend them, they can revoke them through legislative action. And we've certainly seen that happen many times over the years. So, Mr. Con, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just needed to geek out here for a second. I want that everybody know that there are only about 11 states in the United States that are home rule. Almost everybody is closer to where we are, although we're a little bit more hybridized. Sorry.
Interesting.
I don't know much, but when I say, well, I know something I want to say.
So, now that we understand the authority, enforcement, municipal enforcement can really be broken down into five general categories. Law enforcement, building code, land use. And when I talk about land use, I'm talking about development-related land use, minimum housing, and public nuisance. And then public nuisance and land use have subcategories that I have listed here. However, for the purposes of this presentation, I'm not going to cover all of these. I'm going to take out law enforcement because that is uniquely different than the other four categories. It's also very big and can be a presentation all in of itself. I'm going to take out building code because that is delegated to Buncombe County. The town of Woodfin is not responsible for enforcing building code. I will cover land use, development, public nuisance, and minimum housing. But I'm not going to cover some of the, the subcategories because grading and erosion control is delegated to Buncombe County. We have no local historic districts. We don't do historic preservation. And we do not have standards for snapsons. So, if we look at those three categories, one by one, starting with land use, I will kind of help explain some of the unique aspects of each of these different categories. So, whereas our general authority for land use regulation comes from 160A, we have a specific chapter called 160D that is focused on local planning and development regulation. So, that includes a lot of things, grading, stormwater, building, minimum housing. But I separated out minimum housing because I'm focusing on the development side of land use. So, so, 160D, we've discussed before, is a relatively recent consolidation of all of the land use-related laws for both municipalities and counties. Before, it was all 160A, and when counties were in 153, and then it got merged, and other little random pieces that were in other chapters got kind of pulled in, and then it got modernized and updated and clarified. So, it was a very helpful change, and we commonly refer to 160D. 160D, and for land use, I've kind of lumped zoning, stormwater, and flood together. Those are the three subcategories in land use that we are responsible for. And they have a lot in common when it comes to enforcement. And, and that is largely covered in 160D. 160D also establishes that there are specific property owner rights. We've talked before about vested rights and permit choice. That is specifically laid out in 160D. And a lot of those rights apply across all of those subcategories. 160D also establishes strong limits on performing certain land use actions, like annexation enforcement, downzoning, et cetera. It also provides strong limits on the regulation of single-family housing, outdoor advertising, forestry, agriculture, wireless telecommunications, just to name a few. There's more. Those are some of the main ones that we come across.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
I know we've brought some things in-house. Will we ever bring in, like, the grading or the other thing, the building codes, or any of those anticipated to come in-house for us to do? Or are we always going to have a separate situation?
It could be at the direction of council.
Yeah, it could be at the direction of council. I mean, it is, I, I'm, we can talk about it more. We do not have a plan to assume anymore. So, we took over stormwater last year. We've now taken over flood. And that were the two areas that we felt comfortable, that we had the expertise, and we had the capacity to manage. Taking over building would be tough. It's, building especially requires significant education, certification, and training for that inspector. They would perform a plan review as well as inspections. They would perform a plan review as well as inspections. That, those positions are hard to fill. Having one person do the town of Woodfin, they wouldn't be busy enough. We don't have that much construction. It would be challenging. I think we're better off, it would be more efficient and cost effective to continue to work with Buncombe County.
I'm just guessing, but I bet if you hold all of the similarly sized municipalities in North Carolina, you wouldn't find many that have that built as inspection.
Do any municipalities share inspectors?
That's a good question.
Not that I'm aware of.
It's easy to see it to the county because of the trends that they are required by law to have building inspections. And I think, that's why I say, I think almost all, I would bet you anyway, almost all municipalities this size.
But as far as I know, we're not measuring customer satisfaction by the outsourced process. We hear only complaints for the most part. Takes too long, they're grouchy. I mean, we could do that as a first step to figuring out whether we needed to bring it in-house.
I haven't heard that as much about building as I have heard it about flood and stormwater. Yeah.
Probably also true that people who've had a good experience with it don't say any like, right, right?
Yeah.
Right.
So it is possible, it is possible to bring those in-house. I think it becomes a resource question and a values question. So moving on to discuss land use enforcement. I think of land use enforcement as occurring in layers. You could also think of it as phases, maybe, before construction, during construction and after construction. And a lot of folks don't recognize that when we do development review, enforcement happens at each of those stages. Enforcement's all about compliance, compliance with your rules. So the first layer is to check that, check for compliance before construction. So that's the plan review stage. We receive the application, we receive the plans. Depending on the scope of the project, it might be one plan, it might be six plans. But the plans reviewer reviews that and checks that plan, that proposal, for compliance with that municipality's specific development requirements. If they find that something isn't compliant or that it is missing information, they prepare a comment letter. That comment letter is shared with the applicant, they revise the plans, the plans get resubmitted, you review them again to check for compliance. That process can happen as many times as it needs to. It usually doesn't take more than one, sometimes two, if it's a really complicated project or there's a lot of sub consultants. But usually it can, a really simple one, like a single-family permit or a deck on a house or something, that's usually just, you submit once, gets approved and permit gets issued. But that's the goal. The goal is to kind of go through that process until the plans are fully compliant. Once they're compliant, the permit is issued and then you move into the next stage, construction. Permit gets issued, construction starts. Now you can, there's another layer of enforcement, which is through the inspection process. In some of those subcategories, we have pre-established inspections. So before construction gets started, for instance, with stormwater, you'll perform an inspection. It's an established scheduled inspection with the contractor where you go to check to make sure the silt fence is up and installed properly, that the temporary erosion, or excuse me, temporary stormwater facilities are in place and operational. And then they, you give them the go-ahead and they go ahead and get started with construction. We also have unscheduled inspections. If we get a report that somebody has exceeded their grading limits, that might be a zoning violation, we'll send somebody out to inspect it. If they're removing trees in a steep slope area, we'll go out and inspect it. If we have a heavy rain and we're concerned about the stormwater on some of our construction sites, the stormwater inspector will go out and check those sites to make sure that the temporary facilities are working properly. So we have both scheduled and unscheduled inspections, but it's the same essential process as the plan review. You inspect for compliance. If it's not, if it, if it's compliant, no problem, it's approved, you move on. If it's not, you have a conversation with the contractor for corrective action. During construction, we almost never need to resort to formal notices of violation or anything like that because the ability for the project to move forward relies on those being operational or, you know, the site being in compliant. So there's very strong motivation for the contractor to fix it as quickly as possible to get back out there and start work. But you can go back and forth on that, although. The last layer or the last phase is after construction. Now, there is a permit closeout or a project closeout process where you do a final inspection. But once that's done and the CO is issued, the building and development review process is done. Everybody goes home, there's nothing more for anybody to look at. What we're talking about in this case is a site that over time moves out of compliance for some reason. And I'll just use the example of small strip mall, maybe. There's a restaurant, the restaurant becomes wildly successful and now suddenly the parking is insufficient. And they bring in a truckload of gravel and they expand their parking lot to add 10 new spaces. Well, now people are complaining, oh, they removed trees. What about stormwater? Oh, there's a site visibility problem now. So they, most of the time when this happens, it's because they've performed work without permits. They've done something to change their site plan. So we'll go out and inspect it. It's usually complaint-based, but not always. Sometimes we just see violations when we're out and about. We will inspect it for compliance. And in that case, we're checking it for compliance with the original approved plan. So we go back and we look at that original plan. Oh, you didn't have 10 parking spaces over here where all this gravel's been dumped. So you've expanded your parking lot without a permit. So we might issue a notice of violation in that case. It depends, it depends on the extent of the violation. If it's something that's easy to correct, we won't necessarily resort to a notice of violation. We may just have a conversation with the property owner, just say, hey, you know, people are parking in the grass here, it looks like you've kind of expanded. Oh, no, we didn't do that. People just parked, you know. We're like, okay, well, what if you put up a sign that says, no parking on the grass? And they're like, oh, sure, you know. So if it's something simple like that, we don't go to a notice of violation. If they're going to have to come in now and scrape out that gravel, then we have to give them a notice, we have to give them a time to cure. Another potential cure is to apply for a permit now. Just because you didn't get a permit when you did the work, doesn't mean you can't get one now. So a lot of, we call that after-the-fact permit. People will come in and apply to expand their parking lot for those 10 spaces and we may or may not be able to approve it. It just sort of depends on the circumstances. Hopefully we can, and then we close that enforcement case. If we can't and they don't cooperate, they do not remove the illegal parking in this example, then we move to a citation and that's when penalties can be applied.
Can I ask you a question? How do you prevent the whole, uh-uh, ask forgiveness, not permission?
Exactly.
Because if, I mean, if that becomes like the norm of understanding, then, oh, let's see if they catch us. You know, how do we prevent that from happening?
Well, even if, so, we have been doing, so it's really interesting. So since we have gotten multiple years of aerial imagery, you know, we can look at something and say, you know, if they, they just sort of play dumb. We get a, we hire a new staff person, they've never been out there, but somebody complains and says, hey, that parking lot didn't used to be that big. We go back and look at the aerial imagery. We go back and look at what that original plan had and then we go out and compare it on-site. So how we discourage it? I mean, I think the main discouragement is that oftentimes people have to take action that costs money or it takes that parking way. They went through the hassle of buying that load of gravel and having it delivered. You know, it's just a pain and that's a pretty strong discouragement. The other way, we don't do it, but the other way that I've seen municipalities address this issue is to charge double the fee for an after-the-fact permit. So that's another way to consider that.
That, that, yeah, that definitely would be, because I, is there a timeframe? Like, do you have to catch them in a year and a half from the time that they did it? Like you catch it three years down the road?
Yes, there is, there is sort of a statute of limitations. And it depends on how visible the violation is. If it's, if it's something that you pass regularly or you've acknowledged exists in one way or another, like you had a conversation with somebody and they can document that, then you have five years. If you don't act in five years, then it can still be considered non-conforming and unpermitted, but you can't take enforcement action. If it is something that's difficult to see from the boundary of the property, you know, it's behind a building or something like that, then you have seven years.
And is that something that's controlled by the state?
Yes.
Timeline?
So with what Johanna was saying, if we wanted to say double, can, how would we go about doing that? I like that idea.
That would be in our fees and charges.
Okay.
Which we've already adopted for this year. We could consider it for next year or we could do a budget amendment and do.
I still think you don't see a lot of folks that ask for forgiveness. They're not going to ask because, I mean, if they've done that, they, you know. Ordinance is the law.
They hope they don't get caught.
Judicially enforceable, they come to you saying, you're not complying with this law. You know, so it's.
Usually somebody turns them in.
So I can, I can say this because my brother does not live here. I speak from experience as far as knowing how people try to skirt past the rules. So there are plenty, plenty of people, plenty of people out there. So that's, that's, that's why it came, that's why it came to mind.
Yeah, I think the area that we have the most trouble with that, I will say, Woodfin is not bad for doing unpermitted work, not for the things that we, we control. The, the area where we see it the most, and I think is steep slope vegetation removal, that is a little bit different. I don't cover it in this presentation. It is, that's considered an act of destruction. Those fines are significantly higher. We don't, we don't go through the same process with steep slope violations. So that's an immediate fine that gets assessed. So the, these are things like that parking lot example that I.
So what about, like, since we have revamped our expectations as far as land development for housing with our green space requirements? And they say they're not going to do something, they give us a plan, they include the percentage of green space within the, and then they don't do that and they just like completely decimate it with the thought that, again, they're going to ask forgiveness, not permission. What, what can we do to really discourage that type of practice?
So for landscape requirements, so these are our development requirements for new projects. And we now have a standard for open space that includes vegetation. But the vegetation requirements can be satisfied by either preserving vegetation or installing vegetation. There is a benefit to preserving vegetation because you get more credits for a more mature tree. If somebody removed that vegetation or impacted it in a way that didn't comply with the ordinance, then they would be responsible for bringing that site back into compliance, which means they're now planting however many more trees. So not just the three that they removed, they may have gotten, those three may have been a credit for 11 trees. Now they have to come in and plant 11 trees.
What timeframe? Like, is that like before you get CO? I don't even know if that we do COs here, but.
Yeah, we.
Or do they have 10 years to do that?
No, no, they have to, there's different ways we can approach it. We can hold a CO in some cases. We sometimes will accept a bond. You know, if it's the middle of the summer and they're anxious to open, we might hold a bond for that vegetation so that we can make sure it gets planted when the season is more suitable.
So do we currently do that or is that stuff that we can add?
That is one of the options and yes, we do currently do that. It depends on the time of year and their particular schedule as to when, as to which option we pursue in terms of ensuring compliance. So that's land use. I'm going to move on from land use now to the second category, which is, I kind of broadly characterize as public nuisance. And you may remember from my earlier slide, we have three areas of public nuisance that I'm going to cover. I'm going to cover sanitation, noise and junk, sanitation, junk vehicles and noise. So beginning with sanitation, this is actually one of those sort of broad authorities that are granted by the state. The state says municipalities must provide trash collection and sanitation services. And the, and you have the authority to do so. And you can adopt standards that help you with that enforcement. So that is what we did. We have a solid waste ordinance. It was updated in 2022. It was primarily updated for the purpose of incorporating the new cans that we had purchased and were distributing. So our enforcement standards focus primarily on the unapproved use of the container. So which includes like putting stuff in the container that's prohibited or leaving your lids stacked open, that kind of thing, overstuffing the container. Improper placement of the container, which is essentially you just have to bring it out to the curb on your collection day for us to be able to collect it. And then waste accumulation. The first two, the unapproved use of container in proper placement, we don't have enforcement problems with that typically because your service depends on your compliance. You don't get service if you're not complying. If we have repeat problems of you putting dangerous or hazardous material in your container, we're going to stop collecting the container. We'll give you notice, we'll give you an opportunity to stop it. But if you keep doing it, we're going to discontinue service. If you never bring your can out to the curb in time for collection, you're not going to get a service. So we don't have compliance issues with, with those two categories. The main thing that we cover when we talk about sanitation enforcement is waste accumulation. So highlighting that. We have a standard, we have a couple of standards that tried, attempt to address waste accumulation. We have a standard that says property has to be maintained in a clean and litter-free manner, but we don't really explain exactly what that means. We do have a definition of litter, but it's not super helpful. We focus, and the focus, as I mentioned earlier, is on public health, safety and welfare. That's why the state authorizes us to enforce sanitation. What our ordinance does, and most ordinances do the same thing, we're not unique in this way, is we'll say, you can't prohibit, you can't store materials that are problematic. And then we try to explain or identify what is problematic. Material that creates an odor, material that creates a pest infestation, something that, you know, threatens a fire hazard or presents some sort of unsafe condition. Our ordinance, interestingly, has some interesting language about appliances. Doesn't say you can't have an appliance outside, on your patio or on the side of the house. It just says it can't be stored where it's unsafe or in an unsafe manner. So if it's a chest freezer, you have to have the door off. If it's the kind of appliance that you can't push the door open from the inside, the door has to be removed. Otherwise, it's fine. So that's, that's our, those are our standards. So this contains some fairly significant ambiguity and subjectivity. That's not always bad. We usually are taught that it's bad and it's not especially helpful. But I think sometimes it makes sense, this might be one of those cases. I'm going to talk about that more towards the end of this presentation. So here's an example. This is a, this is actually a property we visited this week. These are the same property, a couple of different views of the same property. So I think we would all agree, most people would look at this and not be super excited if that's what you saw every time you walked out your front door. But is it a sanitation violation? And the answer is no. And it's not because there's no odor. There's nothing here that's creating an odor. There is no food source or anything that's attracting rodents.
You wouldn't evaluate the, what looks like a mattress as a nesting opportunity?
No, probably not. I mean, you have to have firsthand knowledge that this is a vermin situation. So you would have to see the nest or see evidence of that. And, you know, in this case, there is nothing like that. There is no particular fire hazard. Just because something can catch on fire, doesn't mean it's a fire hazard. A house can catch on fire, it's not a fire hazard. And there are no particular unsafe conditions. There's nothing that somebody is, it's not going to fall on somebody. There isn't broken glass or jagged metal or anything like that. So in this case, this is not a violation of our sanitation ordinance and we couldn't do anything.
So what if there were beer cans scattered all across the lawn?
That would be the icing on the cake.
No, I am serious. So you have that, what's currently there, but instead of it being tidied, because it was tidied last week, as far as the blower and the weed eater and whatnot, what if there were beer cans and trash scattered about seven days, five days out of the week?
So is it creating an odor? Is it attracting rodents? Is it a fire hazard? Is it an unsafe condition?
But it's trash.
It's trash, I mean.
It's not a litter-free manner.
So it might not be litter-free, but you have a conversation with a property owner and that property owner says, I, every month, I collect all of those beer cans and I recycle them. Or I take them somewhere and I get, I cash them in. Or, you know, people, people will say things like that. Now, most people, when they're contacted by an enforcement officer, will be like, ah, I'm sorry, okay, I'll clean them up. Most of the time.
So what if that is not an owner, but a tenant?
So we focus enforcement on the individual. So we focus enforcement on the individual who is responsible. If that individual, if it's a tenant, and that individual does not respond, we move to the owner. Ultimately, the owner is responsible for their property, even if the tenant is the one doing the action. But we always try to start with the responsible party. So I'm going to move on now from sanitation to junk vehicles. So where sanitation, we had sort of broader authority. We develop our own sanitation ordinance. For junk vehicles, we are very limited by state law. The state is very specific in what we can and cannot consider when we do junk vehicle enforcement. And those standards, and there is some subjectivity in that language, which is not super helpful. And those standards definitely favor the property owner. And I think the subjective language favors the property owner. So it is so specific, in fact, that I'm going to walk you through a flow chart, where we've basically taken the statute and we've broken it down. But before I do that, I want to talk a little bit about some shared responsibility. We do have some code enforcement situations where we kind of share responsibility. This is one, although I think the police department's responsibility is much less. It kind of depends on where the junk vehicle is located. If it's in a road, then that becomes potentially regulated under traffic control laws, and the police can take action, and they can skip some of the other steps and be able to, you know, essentially remove that vehicle much faster. If it's on private property, that's zoning. So a lot of folks don't recognize that, that this is actually our zoning staff who are going out and doing the majority of that enforcement. So here's that flow chart. So the flow chart is, this is actually only half the flow chart, because there's a whole path where that first question, where is the vehicle located? And you see, we go off to the top, we go north to Fee Simple Property. This is only the part of the flow chart for vehicles that are parked on private property or on Fee Simple Property. If it's in the right of way, there's a whole other flow chart. I'm not showing it here because that actually doesn't happen very often. It's almost always on Fee Simple Property, these vehicles. So that's the chart to begin with. So what we do is we start with where is the vehicle located? Right? And in this example, it's on Fee Simple Property. So that moves us to the next question. Now, this is all in the statutes, right? They make you go through this process. Is it on town-owned property and has been left for more than 24 hours? Or is it on somebody's property without their permission? Also, these two things almost never happen. But if the answer is yes, then the car is abandoned and we proceed with notice and we have it removed. It's kind of quick and easy. But if the answer is no, which it almost always is no, then does the vehicle have a current license plate? That's the next question. If it has a current license plate, we cannot take any further action. It is not a junked vehicle. Doesn't matter how wrecked it is, doesn't matter if it's operable. If it has a license plate and it's current, it's not junked. If it doesn't have a current license plate, then we have to ask the next set of questions. Is it partially dismantled or wrecked? Can it be moved? Can, can it be self-propelled? Can you crank it up and move it back and forth? Is it more than five years old or worth less than $100 and worth less than $100? So that's the next set of questions. More often than not, the answer is yes. But if the answer is no, it's, it's not dismantled, then we cannot take any further action. If it can be self-propelled, if they can crank it up and move it back and forth, doesn't have a current license plate, might have a busted windshield, but if they can crank it up and move it back and forth, it's not a junked vehicle.
So the rule used to be license plate. So now it is no longer license plate?
It has been this for a long time. It's not just license plate. I don't know when the statute, it's been this statute for as long as I've looked at junk vehicles, which has been probably at least 10, 15 years. So.
What is the, why, so there's been so much complaint within the community from those who have them, who are complaining about enforcement against them. Has that not been happening then?
We do have junk vehicle enforcement. So we have been doing junk vehicle enforcement, but we follow this process.
Right. They've actually had some, like, some go away.
Yeah. So if the answer is yes, it is dismantled, it can't be self-propelled, it is really wrecked. And it is more than, it is not five years old or worth whatever, weirdly phrased. I always have to read it like five times. Then it's classified as an aesthetic junk vehicle. So now we've got the classification of it being a junk vehicle, but now this is the real doozy of a question, this last question. Does the public benefit of removing the vehicle outweigh the burden to the car owner? So when I said these laws are really designed to favor the property owner, this is a good example of that. So it is the town's responsibility, it's our burden to demonstrate that it meets one or more of these standards. And that can be really hard to do. Now, I will say, when you get to this point, a lot of the times you get voluntary compliance. People are like, oh yeah, sorry, I've been meaning to take care of that. I, okay, I'll take care of it. Or, yeah, my brother stored that on my property. He said he was going to come back for it. I'm tired of looking at it. Fine, take it. Oftentimes, we get to that point, but we also sometimes experience people who are like, oh, don't you dare touch my car. That is my baby. I am fixing that up, or I have a plan to fix it up. My son and I are going to fix that up. Don't touch it. Or I use it for parts for my other car. That still happens these days. So we have to really understand what is their need and what is the impact to the surrounding community. And then we have to try to come up with some substantiation if we're going to remove it against their, without their support. We sometimes can have some success just working with them. Can you relocate it? Can you move it to the back behind your shed? Can you cover it? Can you move it in the garage? Can you do these things? Sometimes that, that's another option, but not always. If we get to this point and the property owner, the car owner, is not cooperative, we have to get police escort. It can get uncomfortable and ugly. So we usually do that in those particular cases. So that's junk vehicles. Another public nuisance is noise. So we don't always recognize this, but we manage noise two ways. One is through our code, but the other is through zoning. That is the whole purpose of zoning, is to separate disharmonious and incompatible land uses. It's to control and prevent nuisances like noise, traffic and pollution. That is zoning fundamentally, and that is part of why challenges against zoning have been dismissed and zoning has been upheld, is because it's broadly recognized the value that it provides in being able to control for these nuisance situations or these incompatibility situations. So as I mentioned, we also have some, some standards. Woodfin has very basic noise standards. We manage noise, but our standards have a lot of this kind of vague and ambiguous language. Unreasonably loud, unnecessary noise, detrimental to life or health. You know, disturbs the quiet of a reasonable person. Noise that's offensive, noise that's excessive. How do you define these things? And remember, it's our burden to prove that that noise is offensive, for example, or it's unreasonably loud. The best way to do that is having objective criteria. We do have one good example of objective criteria, which is construction noise. We have a window where we say, you can make noise for construction between the hours of 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday. So if there is construction activity going on at 11 o'clock at night and somebody calls to complain, it's very easy for us to point to the orders and say, you're in violation of the ordinance. That is a good, clear, objective standard that allows us to take enforcement action. But most of these situations don't fall in that category. Most of them are these other conditions. The other objective standard that you see municipalities attempt to use is using decibels, saying you can't create a noise that's over a certain decibel. But that, I think, has limited success for a few reasons. If you apply the standards that a lot of municipalities apply, I'll tell you, it's quite high. You, you, if you take a decibel meter, you have that standard, you go out to the person's property who's complaining, you can hear the noise, you can understand why it's disturbing. You take that decibel meter reading, and it's actually significantly below what the actual level is. Now, I guess you can always consider different levels, but when everybody else is doing one level and you go with something much more restrictive, you have to just sort of be careful. Also, you have to have a decibel meter. That meter has to be calibrated. You have to take multiple readings and take the average of those readings to, you know, make sure that you don't have some random one off. So it's, it's not the easiest standard to apply and enforce. Also, a lot of these noise complaints happen in the middle of the night. So our police officers would normally respond. They are the ones who respond now to noise complaints. If they're on other calls, they can't really get to these, these situations. And it might not, they may not be able to get to it, just depending on what else is going on and how much staff they have. Yes, ma'am.
So there, with you saying that, am I to understand that there's not a, like, why would you have to prove the decibel if it's at 12 o'clock at night? Is there not just a blanket after 11, there should not be?
Any noise?
No.
No, I, I think most people would not like a noise ordinance that says you can't create any noise after a certain hour at night.
Well, you could, I mean, could you not frame it as reasonable noise? Like people talking, walking to the car versus someone playing?
Well, it is, and it does, you know, there's, there, these are, each of these are subjective because what you think is unnecessary, someone else might think is necessary, what you think is reasonable, they may not. What you, you know, what you find offensive, they may not. But there is a cumulative thing here where if you come out to a call and it's, you know, 2:00 in the morning and it is rattling windows of the house next door, then, you know, there's a point where you could enforce on that basis. And so this is a clear, I've got a clear violation here that any reasonable person would be disturbed by this much noise. But it's, it's super hard, and it is very, like Shannon is saying, it's very, very difficult to make an enforceable ordinance because so much of this is either subjective, or if you try to make it objective through a decibel meter, those things are a, an evidentiary nightmare to try to show all the things that you mentioned.
I understand that, but what about a party? I mean, if you have 30 people that are at 2:00 in the morning, there's no, outside, there's no way they're being.
That's unreasonable.
That's right. So a lot of people would say that's unreasonable. There are people who argue that it is perfectly reasonable to be able to have a party in my home. I'm just saying, it will happen. I'm not saying it's the right thing to do to argue. I'm not saying I agree with that. But I'm just saying it will happen, and then the burden comes on us to prove that it is unreasonable. So most of the time, when you knock on a door, a police officer knocks on a door at 2:00 in the morning, because there's a loud party, it quiets down. Most of the time, that's all we need to do, but we do have situations where it can be kind of chronic.
Well, my concern is, is if we are going down this route about, well, it's hard to prove, you know, it's just, it's just going to be difficult to prove that we're not going to make it a priority to go to someone's house if there's a gathering at.
No, we, we go, we go because it is effective. We go and we make contact and we say, even if, right, turn it down. We have a complaint. You're disturbing your neighbors. Most of the time, people will comply. But that isn't, I mean, that is a part of the enforcement process, it's making contact. But it's not, if somebody wanted to argue with you, if they wanted to continue to have that party, if they want, it would be difficult for us to stop them. I guess is what I'm getting at. It doesn't usually happen, but it would be difficult.
So Mike, what I'm having an issue with here is that we are looking at catering our laws or rules for our community based on a few than, versus the good of everyone. So just out of the fear of us having to prove something.
I don't, I don't think that that's what we're doing, and it's not, and this is a statutory standard. We have to do, we, the burden is on us. That is not something we're choosing to do. That is just the reality of it. And that's all I'm trying to do, is to expose you all to the reality of this and what is effective, what isn't effective. It is very effective for a police officer to show up, knock on a door and ask them to be quiet. That is effective. If they chose not to, they were just belligerent, they were difficult, they didn't agree with their neighbor. They think their neighbor has, has it out for them, you know, this is unreasonable. I'm allowed to have a party, that kind of thing. If we get into that kind of situation, we can't always, I mean, we can try to find them, but that doesn't usually go anywhere.
I'm really not trying to be difficult here. It's just, it, it seems to me that the direction we're going is out of ease instead of out of, because if we have in our statutes that they have a right to do this, if the wording is not there, that we have a certain expectations for our, our community members, then it'll be abused more than we think it will be.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Another way of looking at this is don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. If most of the time, a police officer knocking on a door, and most of the time, people turn it down, noise, public nuisance, I declare victory myself.
When I, I, when I was.
Practical. You have to be practical.
When I was reviewing these slides before the meeting.
That's the thing. I, I will tell you that I actually live in a neighborhood where there is a rental that is to college students, and monthly, they have a party until like 4:00 in the morning.
Do you call the police? Have you?
No, I don't.
Why not?
Why? Because I know they're doing something else and I just shut my window. But the point is, is if there was an understanding that this was an absolute, should not be happening, like, if they knew that they could do this, then maybe they would be cranking up the volume even louder. And so I'm not saying it from my perspective, because I can just put earplugs in and go. But if we're opening this door for other neighborhoods, because we do have higher-end communities, this is not going to happen. But mid-sized communities and, and lower, this is going to happen to where you can't have peace in your own home because what it's suggesting, and I'm not saying that that's what you're saying, is it's too much effort to do anything about it.
And that's not at all what I'm saying.
It's not.
I'm just saying that it is difficult to enforce. If you get to that point, it's difficult. And having objective standards is the best way to do it. To, to be able to say, or to say, it's just being unreasonable, and now I have to defend what is unreasonable, that's just always going to be more difficult. So it's just, it's just, you know, Asheville struggled with this. They spent, I think, 18 months working, like, having stakeholder groups, working on standards.
But they're so much larger than us.
Well, but they have the same problem. I mean, it's the same problem. Everybody has the same problem. This is not unique to Woodfin or Asheville or anybody else.
No, 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 I understand that. The, the, the burden on Asheville to monitor this kind of situation is going to be much greater because the population is so much greater. So they're going to more likely have it happen.
I actually don't think it is any greater. I think per capita, we have just as much. I think this kind of enforcement isn't more common in Asheville, and they have more responsibility. I mean, it, it happens here too, and, you know, based on our resources, it's probably a wash. When I was.
I guess I'm, I'm going to make sure it's clear. This is in your ordinance. It is declared to be a health nuisance to cause a, just unnecessarily disturbing noise, especially in the nighttime. You have declared it to be, you know, potentially detrimental to life, health, safety. Those are all, within your legal authority, it's just the concept of a noise ordinance is much simpler than actual enforcement.
Yes.
And I think that's.
I understand that. I'm just saying that if we lessen it, then, then.
Nobody's.
It's perceived as not an important.
Nobody's saying we're going to lessen it. Nobody is saying any of that. When I was preparing this ordinance, or this presentation, I was thinking to myself, I need to introduce this. And when I introduced this, explained that there could be times in this presentation where you think I'm being defensive or I'm making excuses. That is not the case. This is, this is just inherently challenging. And my goal is to help you understand these inherent challenges, and this is one of them. Is the subjective language and that burden being on us to kind of prove it. But I would agree with Councilmember Cohen, but don't let the enemy be, or don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. We do achieve compliance a lot of the time, most of the time, probably.
Have we ever thought about having, like, quiet hours in our ordinance?
I actually thought they did exist. It was from like 10 to, 10 to 7 at least.
No, I don't think.
It used, or 11 to 7 in the morning or something along those lines?
There are some things that hinted that.
Yeah, no, there, it used.
Yeah, there's certain things you can't do in those hours.
Construction.
Yeah, construction being one.
One of them, yeah.
You can set times that you mean by when it's more egregious to cause more noise.
Yes.
It's still going to be somewhat subjective.
Right.
Right.
What you call to be offensive.
Well, but the subjective stuff could be, you could have parties or you're refinishing your basement and sanding it. Like, uh, as your own self and not a contractor, because the contractor rules are based off contractor rules. So like you could list its normal behaviors as in walking to your car and talking to your spouse at 3 o'clock in the morning is not an issue. Your dog outside, letting him out at 4 o'clock and he barks, that's not an issue. But you having a 25-person kegger is an issue.
There are things that we can look at, you know, a party that's six people versus 30 people. Um, a dog that barks once versus a dog that barks every single night for four hours. So duration of noise, um, consistency of noise, hours of noise. These things we can all kind of take together to help build a case that is unreasonable or it's offensive, or it's detrimental, all of those things. But it's just a challenge. Fortunately, we don't usually have to do that. Usually we just make contact and it, and it stops.
I understand Shannon, but, and it is no, uh, nothing disparaging for y'all, but I'm the only one that lives in a normal neighborhood. Y'all do live in neighborhoods that this is less likely to happen. And so I'm here speaking for the, the citizen that lives in the normal part of town.
Then start calling the cops, please. Ask your neighbors to.
Jim, I have been busy for the last year doing something else.
So there are, I'm going to, at the end of my presentation, I'm going to talk about some alternatives. And as you have raised these points, I realize there's an alternative that I had not covered in that, um, which is appealing to the property owner. We get a lot of traction and we usually start with an appeal to the property owner. If you have tenants, I would recommend contacting the property owner saying, we have an ongoing problem with your tenants. And then they can often get those folks in line. So put the burden on somebody else. But these alternatives are oftentimes much more effective than our staff going out and doing enforcement. I'm going to talk about that a little bit more here in a bit.
Let's go.
So moving on, um, I'm going to talk about minimum housing. So this is the last of the three categories. So with minimum housing, one thing I want to distinguish is it is not the same thing as building code enforcement. That, those are two separate things, entirely separate. Buncombe County handles building enforcement as we discussed earlier and that is focused on new construction. It is not on existing homes, which is what minimum housing covers. So when building code, when those COs get issued, they walk away, they're done. 30 years later, 50 years later, if that house deteriorates to a point where now it is not safe for human habitation, then it becomes a minimum housing problem. So Town of Woodfin is responsible for minimum housing. And we do have some minimum housing standards, but this is a little bit like junk vehicle. There are very specific statutory parameters for those standards. So as I mentioned, minimum housing focuses on basic requirements for habitability. Space, you can't crowd it, you can't put 12 people in a thousand square feet. Ceiling height, you can't have people living in a basement where there's only five and a half feet of clearance. Um, functional systems, you have to have plumbing, heating and electricity that are in working order. You do not have to have air conditioning. That is not a requirement despite what some tenants think. Um, but the others are. And the structure itself has to be, has to have integrity. The roof, floors, walls can't be leaning, caving in, collapsing, that sort of thing. Um, there is another one that I, sorry, I had a revision to this slide and I, uh, didn't get it in here in time. It was sanitation. That's another standard that we do look at. Now I'm going to walk you through another flow chart. Sorry, it's kind of like, uh, junk vehicles, but this again, kind of comes from the statutes. So we start with a complaint or an observation. Now, it's almost always a complaint, but the complaint usually comes from not the tenant or the property owner. It usually comes from a neighbor. It can come from staff just observing it. But we have to have firsthand knowledge of the violation. So we have to actually witness it. So if that tenant or property owner doesn't want us to enter the property and we can't confirm the violation without entering, then we can't confirm the violation. We can't enforce minimum housing. Now, there are some legal options where we can get administrative search warrant. That's a lot to go through, but it is a possibility. Um, it, interestingly, I, I would say it's 50/50. People sometimes are like, yeah, sure, come in, even when it is bad. And other times they're like, hell no, get off my property. Yes, sir.
What's a public officer in this context? Anybody on staff?
It's staff, yeah. Um, it's whoever is assigned to this function. So for us, it's going to be zoning staff.
Got it.
So again, starts with that observation, that complaint. So first, we have to identify the violation. If there is no violation, no further action. If there is, we proceed to notice. So we send a notice to the property owner. Uh, we often will send a copy to the resident if they're the ones living in there. Um, and then we set a hearing date. That notice has to be delivered 10 to 30 days before the hearing date. You have to give them ample opportunity to prepare. And, um, I believe it has to be sent certified mail, I don't remember. But you have to confirm that they receive it and that they're prepared and they're coming. And then you have to hold that hearing. The owner can attend, they can bring other people, they, you know, they can explain, oh, I've been meaning to fix this, it's going to take me 60 days. I'm waiting for my sister to give me money, et cetera. You know, we kind of just have a conversation about it and we talk about the problem and why it's important that it gets fixed. So-
Personally, by registered or certified?
Yeah, thank you. So if the hearing, the result of the hearing is, I just need another 30 days and I'll have it done and, and then we go out and inspect and it, it's fixed, then the case is closed. There is no other action for us. If it doesn't meet the standard, continues to not meet the standard, they've gotten the extension, they still haven't fixed it, then we issue an order. And that, if it is an order for repair, if the cost of the repairs is less than 50% of the value of the home, it's an order for demolition if it's more than 50%. And that can also be argued if they come back and say, okay, I, I think it's more than 50, or it's less than 50%, so I don't think it's a demolition, I think it's a repair, you know, then we have to consider what information they have.
How many times in a, a year would we, would we do this? How often does this happen?
We have not done much minimum housing enforcement since I've been here. And I'm going to talk a little bit about why in a little bit, if you can just hang on. So if we do order a repair, we issue that order and it continues to be out of compliance, they just don't respond, they just ignore us. Then we move towards council, council authorization where the council would adopt an ordinance directing town to take action, town staff to take action. And that action can be to repair, secure, demolish the structure. We're not going to recommend an, uh, an order or an ordinance to repair. We're going to secure it, we're going to fence it off, board it up, something like that. Or we're going to demolish it. Those are, those are the more likely options. All of those costs become the burden of the town. We now, you know, we're responsible for those costs and then we can put a lien on the property, potentially recoup those costs someday. Um, I don't remember, like, I don't think we, I don't think there's any special rules that we jump ahead in the lien. I think it's just the order it's received.
So the same priority as a special assessment?
Yeah.
Which is pretty, I mean, you're going to be paying taxes, you're going to be-
Yeah. So you may or may not, at some point in time, get that money back. Um, and then we have to post the property unfit for human habitation. Another option, this, the securing the property, that's another option for a property owner. If they have a house that is not safe for human habitation, really what their requirement and responsibility is to secure it. If nobody's living in it and they just don't know what to do about it, they just have to secure it. It can remain unsightly, it can remain a problem. Now, we have had problems with vagrants, like pulling boards off windows and climbing back in and then they have to secure it again. And, um, that, that does happen, um, from time to time, but that's, that's the basic.
But the standard for securing is what?
Just, it's usually boarding, you can't get in it. You can't, you, so it's usually just boarding up the windows or, you know, nailing the doors shut, putting a fence around the property, anything like that. So that is, uh, minimum housing. And so eventually, if you do demolish that structure, you do secure it, then the case is closed and we move on. And the house just sits there. And there are a lot of houses that will sit in that state for a very long time. Does not mean that it is a minimum housing problem if nobody's living in it and it's just secured. Okay. All right. So I'm going to talk just briefly about enforcement process. Any questions about that before I move on? Okay. So the enforcement process is more or less a linear process. We start with that complaint or that observation. We identify that there's a problem. We create a record. We started doing this recently where we create records of enforcement, even if, once we make contact, we realize that there isn't a violation or like that sanitation one, we'll create a record, check, not a violation, close the case. And we'll just say, no violation identified, close it. So we're able to identify how many cases we've looked at. So, you know, we keep it for our own records. We also keep it in case there's recurring problems. That's another good benefit of those records. So we create that record, we do the inspection, we maybe identify a violation, we make contact with the property owner. We always try first to just make contact to kind of learn what the situation is. People usually respond better if you make contact with them first. Sometimes we warn them after that contact, you're going to get a notice of violation because we need to document this. And even though you plan to fix it or whatever, we're going to send you a notice of violation. That notice of violation, and it depends on which category of enforcement you're looking at, but there's certain requirements for the notice. Sometimes it's how it gets mailed and delivered. Sometimes it's the information that's included in the notice, sometimes it's both. But a lot of notices require that you give somebody an opportunity to fix the problem. It's that time to cure. And it has to be reasonable based on the violation. Some violations maybe only need a day or two, other violations might need 30 days or 60 days. Um, general rule of thumb, 30 days is usually the, the more often than not, that's the window we draw. They can always ask for an extension. If after that time to cure, nothing's happened, it's not been fixed, we move into a citation. It's at that citation level that we've now issued a fine or there could be a fine associated with it. If they then continue to refuse that, then we can consider legal action. So minimum housing has specific legal action or legal steps that you would follow. Um, for other cases, you know, you could consider liens, it kind of depends. You can, um, take them to small claims court, you can do a variety of things. Couple of things that are important to remember about the enforcement process. Again, I've mentioned this many times already, you have to personally confirm the violation. Just because somebody calls us and says, this dog is barking or this party is going on, it, it's not that I don't believe you, but I have to verify that this violation occurs. So we can't do it on hearsay. And then, again, I mentioned several times already, the burden is on us to prove and substantiate the violation. So in thinking about enforcement, so this is the considerations part that I mentioned, um, this is a challenge for everybody. We are not alone. I'm not trying to make excuses. It's just challenging, that is just inherent. Enforcement in general is challenging. I think municipal enforcement that isn't law enforcement is especially challenging. Um, see you, Jerry. So we want to be cautious and thoughtful as we proceed with enforcement. And we always, I'm very proud of our staff for being very cautious and thoughtful. We want to try to avoid enforcement of vague or overly broad laws, any action that would be considered discriminatory, a violation of personal property rights, lack of due process. These are sort of legal considerations when we do enforcement. There's some non-legal considerations. Balancing quality of life with economic development. If that restaurant needs that live music two days a week and, but it's slightly disturbing to people who leave, you know, just acoustics in this area can be kind of weird sometimes. You know, you just want to create standards that are reasonable and allow businesses to thrive while trying to preserve quality of life for everybody else and unnecessary use of resources. Most of these are pretty, like, you understand when I say we can't violate personal property rights. The thing that I think a lot of people don't understand is the discriminatory, the discriminatory enforcement. So that, I just want to pause and talk about that just a little bit. There are certain areas of enforcement, most commonly sanitation, junk vehicles and minimum housing, that disproportionately impact people who are economically disadvantaged. So low-income people, elderly or infirm, physically disabled, mentally disabled. They are adversely impacted, um, when you try to take enforcement action. They're, they're disproportionately represented in those cases. So whenever that happens, it's potentially legally problematic, doesn't mean you don't do it, doesn't mean that it isn't warranted. It just is something you have to be aware of and you want to proceed carefully. It can also be socially and culturally undesirable when we are enforcing people against people who have a lot of other challenges.
Is there any means or mechanism for, in situations like this, that the town steps in and tries to ameliorate the situation?
Yes. So there are alternatives to enforcement. So that's where I'm kind of driving with all of this. So education, helping people understand what the laws are and why they exist the way they are. When I talk to people about minimum housing or junk vehicles and how important that is to that individual, a lot of times they're like, oh, okay, I don't like it, but I understand it. There's charitable aid. We mentioned earlier our inaugural Faith Alliance meeting. I think this is a great opportunity to work with our faith partners and other nonprofits in our community to see, is there manpower, is there labor available where we can go, identify properties that have property owners who require assistance and give them that assistance. That property that I showed you earlier, that, you know, if that's, I, I don't know what the person living in the property, what the situation is. But if that's a situation where you have somebody who's disabled or elderly and infirm, that's an easy property to clean up, they probably just need some assistance. So if we can find that as a resource, I think that would be helpful. Emergency assistance. We've now partnered with mountain housing opportunities to provide emergency home repair. So if we have a minimum housing situation and somebody needs a new water heater or they need a roof fixed or a porch repaired, we have some resources available to folks in the community for that. And then mental health services. A lot of situations, especially like the situations that are hoarding situations, you can clean them up, you can try to take legal action, but that's fundamentally a mental health disorder. And if you remove all of that material and you clean it all up, they just start hoarding again. And it might take a year, but it'll get back exactly to the condition it was before. I've seen this happen many, many times. Really what we need is that mental health intervention, is helping that person in that situation. Um, and then appeal to the property owner, I discussed that earlier. I think that's a good one to add. Um, I think you can always just try, um, we get a lot of calls where neighbors are sort of fighting about something and we try to ask them like, can you just talk to your neighbor? And a lot of times they haven't, but it's just they're afraid to talk to them. Oh, you know, they don't like me because they don't like my dog or some, you know, and so they're trying to get us to do that for them. It's not really our job. A lot of times if you just have a conversation, it really can go a long way. So we always try to start there. That's it. I'm sorry, I know that's long, it's a lot, but it is a very big subject, so, anyway. Oh, next steps, sorry. I lied, there's one more slide. Um, just, uh, so next steps to hear from you guys. What other information do you need? What other kind of questions do you have? What are your concerns or priorities, that kind of thing? Just please, you don't have to do it tonight, you can do it later.
We will be looking at a bunch of examples in the next couple of months and it'll-
Yeah, we could always use those as another kind of revisit. Yes, sir.
So let's say a neighbor approaches one of us as an elected official and says, I have XYZ problem. Where do we ideally steer them within?
You can always send them to me first and I can, I can, you know,
Navigate that.
Navigate and get them to the right party. Um, you know, this, this kind of, if you were a student and you really wanted to study that and try to like memorize this presentation, then you would know if it's junk vehicle and private property, you would call Ricky or if it was. Um, but you can just always, and our front desk staff know a lot of this too. So if they just call the front desk and say, I have a problem or there's a junk vehicle or I have a neighbor that I'm worried about, you know, they can usually get it to the right party as well. So I just have them call the town. We'll, we'll follow up. Um, we can examine our codes for updating revisions. Probably we're doing some of that now with the code update. I think we keep it going. We look at some of this subjective language and see if there's some additional objective criteria we can consider. Just strengthen it, make it easier for us to do that enforcement. And then of course, identify community services and develop resource references. That's all I have. I promise now, that's it.
Right, thank you. Okay, let's take it home. The last item is a quick discussion of managed lanes on I-240. Uh, this was sent to you by Shannon by email.
Yeah, we're going to follow up, there's another PowerPoint.
This is actually documentation, yeah, if you do this PowerPoint, from the MPO agenda. Just as a reminder, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, we review, rank and recommend all transportation dollars from the feds as well as the state. What's become an issue of evidently heavy complaints from certain towns around us is that I-40 from exit 44 to 27-
is that I-40 from exit forty-four to twenty-seven through Canlin and across the mountain has become a huge issue, needs widening. At the current time, after what has happened through the DOGE process, there is no NCDOT traffic money available for anything like this. It would have to be an unusual problem. And if you, according to the MPO staff, if you recommend a managed lane solution, that might score high enough just to entice NCDOT to go get some money. The MPO's staff's position is that without a managed lane proposal on this section of I-40, it's probably not going to get widened anytime in anybody's, anybody's lifetime.
Excuse me, question?
Yes.
When you say managed lanes, could you describe that?
Yeah, and it was in your packet, illustrated.
Yeah.
Well, it just means that the lanes would be a certain size, certain height, have certain kinds of signs. And in this case, it would have a toll road, toll lane on each side. That's how you would manage the traffic.